We're having it on a Tuesday, kind of threw a little monkey wrench in there, but we have some events going on tomorrow, so we had to have the meeting today. I'd like to welcome everybody again, and at this time, I would like to call the meeting to order at 9:10 a.m. And as always, we start our meetings out in a good way, but I see Vern is not here today, so we will have a moment of silence for our invocation. G. McGwich, everybody. Next, can we have roll call, please?
Kathy Chavers.
Here.
Tara Geeshick.
Here.
Shane Drift.
Omar.
Perry Drift.
Here.
Robert Meyer.
Here.
Okay, we have an acquorum, all right. Moving on, I want to welcome Perry to his first council meeting today, and we'll take it easy on you, okay, Perry? No, just kidding. Welcome, though, welcome. Okay, next, we have approval of the meeting minutes, June 5, 2024, which were tabled at the last meeting.
Approval of the agenda first.
Oh, I'm sorry, approval of the agenda. I'm trying to rush the meeting on here. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Good morning, everyone. I just have a couple additions. We could put them under me and other. It'd be the SS BCI revisions, that would be one of them, and then the next one will be a candidate's update of where we are right now with that.
Okay. Any other additions? If not, a call for a motion to approve with those two additions. Is there a motion?
Move. Second.
Move by Tara, seconded by Shane. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed, silent, motion carried. Okay, now we have the June 5, 2024, meeting minutes. These were tabled at the last meeting.
On page two of three, under the word says, "Move by Tara Geeshick, accepted by Shane Drift, approved, the consent agenda is followed." I just want to point out that letter E, approved contract with DSGW, renovation Virginia property, pressure, I voted against it, and the reason why I voted against it was because of some information that was shared with us previously, prior to the RTC meeting, so that's why I went against approving DSGW. Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification, Shane. There's no other comments? Do we have a motion to approve the June 5, 2024, meeting minutes?
I'll move.
Move by Tara. Is there a second?
All second.
Seconded by Perry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed, silent, motion carried. Our July 2, 2024, meeting minutes are not ready, so do I have a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion made by Tara, seconded by Shane. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, silent, motion carried. Next, we have the consent agenda. Approved resolution number 92-2024, submission of DOI, tribal electrification program full grant application for the FY 2024/2025 award cycle. That was approved 400. Any questions?
Can you, what was just one for again? Is this one by the Y store?
Hang on, Doris. Good morning, Doris.
This grant application was written to install a solar, what's that called? Yeah, a solar farm, and the site we're looking at is over in Vermillion, and the grant was written for 10 million some odd dollars, 500. I don't have the document in front of me, so I don't know the exact amount. Okay.
I just have a really quick, it's DOI, so on the form, it says COI on the request form, so if you could just fix that.
Move.
All second. Aye.
Aye.
I should turn my mic on, too.
Thank you, my mic is not on, thank you. Sorry, Jeff.
Okay, Nikki, can you allow me to share my screen? Okay. So, the BIA had CARES Act funds for potable water, and they allocated the money out to each tribe. And in the packet, I believe, you have the notice from the BIA in there. I didn't print it out for myself. Or yes, I did. Also, Sadie is not available today, so you can see, we got $34,943 from Boysport for potable water, bottled watered or tank watered or home infiltration systems, but it cannot be used for, can't be used for infrastructure. So like, we couldn't like add a water line in the ground type stuff, you know? So there was some stuff around that. So when Scott Cameron from the BIA was here, he gave us a few suggestions. And so one was a water trailer, and this, because of staff turnover, it, you know, was assigned to someone, it didn't, you know, they separated from employment here, and so it didn't get taken care of. And so when the powwows came back up again, we started talking about it. And so here's a picture of one of the options that there is, and I have all three, so you can see them here. And so every powwow, we noticed that we buy lots and lots of bottled water, and there's a lot of, you know, you're throwing out that, all that garbage. So we can get these, they're basically water trailers with fountains, and then you can fill up your water, you know, your own water bottles, your own tumbler or whatnot. And they're, it's really, there are not very many places that make them, so it was kind of hard to get it through apples to apples, so we have a couple of options. And then Sadie made this paper, you know, of some stuff. So this one here is called the Wallop Water, and so it comes with, so this one here has 10 taps and a, two bubblers. Training is not included, but we can get availability. Electric was required. You can have, you can have a small generator you bring it to with the site, or plug it into electricity, or you can have solar panels on them. So they're solar capable, and it's included on this one. The water is filtered. The water capacity is 130 gallons, and that's equivalent to 1,040 bottles of water. It's one-sided. It does not have a gray tank, so like, the runoff, you know, just runs onto the ground, you know, the dripping and spills and stuff. You get it wrapped with your own logos, you know, so you could have, you know, advertising. Estimated delivery time is 16 weeks, 15%, 50% down. This one, this one that we're looking at here is $64,990. Now, that's more, and so we'll go through, and then we'll talk more about it. But things, some extra things to note about it. It has a 50-inch smart TV, and so you can run messages, or whoever sponsored it, or, you know, stuff like that. Has a 12-month warranty, hoses, and usage tank meters and hose covers. Now, the second one is the Quench Buggy. That's what this one looks like. And so this one has eight taps and eight bubblers. A bubbler is like a water fountain, remember, like you had in school? It's, electric is required, it's, has solar, it's solar capable, but it's not included in this quote. It has, you know, it's filtered watered. It's a 300-gallon equivalent, and that's 2,400 bottles of water equivalent. It's double-sided, it has a gray tank in it. Custom branding, yes, you can have two graphics on it. Delivery time's about 10 to 12 weeks. You have to pay 100% upfront, and this one is $58,000. And extras worth noting, it has hoses, it has the highest capacity dust cover, and a dust cover is available. And the third one, the Trailer Bar, that's what this one looks like. And I don't, I don't think the Quench Buggy had a TV with it, if I remember, yeah, it didn't have the TV with that one. The Blue Oasis, it's called the Water Tap, has 10 taps, no bubblers, training's included. It requires electricity, it has solar included, it's filtered water, it has 16-gallon tanks. So this one is a little bit different, is that you change out the 16-gallon tanks. So you could, like, we talked about it, you could actually order more tanks and then kind of keep rotating them, you know? But the six 16-gallon tanks is the equivalent of 768 bottles of water. It's one-sided, does not have a gray tank. Yes, it can be custom branded with a full wrap. It's 12 weeks. Deposit required, you have to pay 100%. Total cost is $32,500. Extras worth noting, it has a 42-inch TV, hoses, trailer dolly, water holding tanks can be easily transported, you know, the little ones, the 16-gallon ones, you can, you know, like we said, you could rotate them and keep refilling them. So you can see, they're not, they're not widely, a lot of places just rent them, you know? And so it's something new, more around big festival hot areas, they have these. We would order, we could order one. It would have to be stored inside, so it'd probably have to be stored out at Public Works in the, by the food shelf. And you could use it not only for powwows, you could use it for the picnics, you could use it for our walks, any events you have. You could have a mess, if it has the big, you know, this TV on there, you could have, doing that. You can use them also for emergencies, so like, like when zoops burned, you know, in the area, it was a big fire, and there's a lot of fire departments, you could bring, you could bring the trailer down on-site, and you could have water for the first responders and stuff, instead of doing all this. So there's a lot, you know, you could bring it to parades and have some kind of advertisement. In emergency situations, you could have updates running on the TV. Someone sponsored a powwow or an event, you could say, sponsored by such and such a grant, or, you know, say thank you, informational, just kind of stuff. So now, the hard part is, which one? And if you do, if you do either the two bigger ones, you would have to supplement that with ARPA funds. So I don't, you know, it's, it's so, so unique and different, you know, what's the council's, you know, inputs and thoughts?
I really like this idea because of the plastic. You see, you know, all the water we buy for events, I mean, we see the plastic, you know, water jugs all over, and water bottles, and emergencies will, it'll come in handy. You know, there's times when the water goes off, you know, due to a water break or whatever. I think this would be a great benefit to both communities, and even surrounding communities in the event of an emergency, fire, whatever. I just see it as a great, great thing to have. I never thought of potable water. I just thought, oh, we're not eligible for that, or what are we going to do with potable water? But this brings up a good point. I didn't even, I wasn't even aware of these trailers like this until you guys started talking about it, so I think it'd be a good idea.
Yes, I think that would be a good, it's a great idea for us to do, and then like, let's say we have, let's say we do buy it, and let's say Fortune Bay wants to sponsor it, so if we go set up, like, let's say, on a fire, wherever, that it could say that on it's sponsored by Fortune Bay, so good public relations. Also, maybe you can have the band's logo on there somewhere? Or if it's sponsored by the Net Lake C Store, the Y Store, or whatever. But you know, as we were talking previously, some of the questions I had was, who's going to be responsible for it? Another question, too, was insurance cost for it? Then when we do utilize it, who's going to pay to refill it? And then warranty, what's the warranty on it? Because if it breaks down, is the company going to come up and fix it, or do we got to bring it to them? Some questions, we need that.
The only one that had noted a warranty was the Wallop Water Trailer Bar one, the top one. If you look all the way to the right, it has, it says, it does have a 12-month warranty. Yes, someone would have to be in charge of it. It will have to be cleaned, you know, because, you know, it could, if you let water sit in there, and it, you know, gets moldy and stuff, you know, it needs to be cleaned out, needs to be stored inside, you know, for winter months. We would have to have a program, but as far as filling the wat, paying for the water that fills it, like, if you're going, if we're going to, let's say, take it to Buell Water to fill it, you know, a program that's sponsoring the event could pay for the water, you know, because they're already buying water bottles and generating all that garbage. And it just hook, they hook up to the back of a truck, or, you know, a trailer, and just gets towed. Yeah.
Just tow it anywhere?
I'd just like to say, now, remember now, we're only going to be putting water in there, only water.
Oh, darn.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I really like this idea, because the, looking at all the plastic waste, it'll reduce, like, you know, annually, I think, you know, that, and then, like I said, supplying our attendants who attend our powwows, our events, our picnics, it's, could be good, you know? I like the idea.
Okay, council, what do you think about, the only one that has the warranty is the Wallop, and that one is at $64,990. What, what, which, one would you guys like to see us get?
So going off Kathy's question, is that if we're going with the Wallop Water, that's 64, basically $65,000, what the difference that we had to come up with?
We'd probably have to come, we would have to come up with about $31,000.
Do we have it?
It'd be, yeah, in ARPA, we do.
What about capacity? This would be for Vermillion, and then for Net Lake, if we needed to use it within community? Is that what we're thinking about, or are we thinking about off-res at other festivals only? I'm just thinking capacity. Do we need 300 gallons, you know?
Yeah, I understand.
If we don't, let's cross that one off, that was the Quench Buggy. One is 130 gallons, which is $64,990. If we, if we need and use 130 gallons at one festival or function, because I would, I would like it to be cleaned out at every function, not stored.
Yeah.
If we only need six to 16 gallons, then we would go with the Blue Oasis at $32,500. That's my reasoning.
I had Sadie do all this research, and she isn't here today, and she, I believe she was recommending the Quench Buggy. One of my points about the Blue Oasis, the one with the six 16-gallon is, is if we ordered extra of those 16-gallon tanks, so like, if it's a big festival, you have that, and then you just have some to, because they're removable and change it out.
That way, you wouldn't have to clean it, then.
Oh, it has to be cleaned, yeah. It always has to be cleaned. It'll have to be flushed and stuff. And they do training on how to clean it.
So, then getting back to the original question, too, that, you know, if we're not, this one doesn't have a warranty on it, and then what usually breaks on it? Is that where you know, so maybe we're going to get the parts with it, so if it breaks down, just change out the parts?
I'm kind of looking, this is the, this one here is the Blue, this one, oh, this is the Blue Oasis one, this one here, the Water Tap. I was looking description, specs. And she had a lot of emails back and forth. I would have to go back, we'd have to circle back and ask about warranty and stuff. It has, you know, they have pumps, so they have moving parts, it has electricity. I would think mostly, like, eventually, the pumps will wear out at some point in time. When, I don't know. And then, like, maybe the seals are, you know, like, or something. Yeah.
Okay.
If you want us to do more, we can take it back and narrow it down and get more information also.
When does the money have to be spent by?
It's self-governance, it didn't have an expenditure date on it. But we had just bought a bunch, what brought it up was, is that we had two very large orders of water, you know, bottled water, and we probably spent probably $4,000 on bottled watered for the last two powwows.
Okay, do you guys have a preference, or on which one you'd like to use, or which one you'd like to see us get?
I just want to know, what are the average, do they give a lifespan, like, how long these things last?
I, I wasn't the one who did the research, so I didn't ask, you know, and it's something rather new, you know?
I just had to say, find out the answers to the questions that we have, and then bring it back.
Yep, I put warranties, what parts wear out, and lifespan.
Yep.
I've got one more question.
Okay.
You talked about CARES Act at, when you first started, did you say that this was from the CARES Act money that you still need to spend?
The BIA CARES Act fund money.
Okay.
And so from the agencies, the federal government considered it spent when they gave it to the tribes.
Yep.
Yeah, and so there wasn't the, so it's in our self-governance, there wasn't an expiration date, but it is restricted on what it can be spent for.
Okay, so let's table this for the next meeting, then, and then we'll get those questions answered. But it's a great idea, so. Motion to table until next meeting.
Move.
Move by Tara, seconded by Shane. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, silent, motion carried. Great job. I never knew about those before. That'll be nice.
One other option was a shower trailer he suggested doing, but those are up to around $100,000 apiece. And, you know, these ones seem to fit our needs more than, because we only use the shower trailers at the couple of powwows.
Which would save on buying plastic bottled water.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. McGwich, Kim Greiner, great job. You and Sadie.
Sadie did the legwork.
Okay. Thank you, Sadie. Next, we have Nikki Irvin. Irving.
The first thing that I have is for the 2024 election bonuses. I know we've been doing this for a few years now, I just don't know how far back. Typically, we give them a bonus for each election day that they worked. So, and everyone, if you see the list, everyone worked both days, so the total is about, was it $8,000 in there? And it gets added to the payroll, so.
Jeff, do I need to remove myself for this one? I have a relative on this list.
Sadie with me.
What?
Probably best, yes.
I'd have to remove myself, too.
Stop it. Okay, so we've got, we've got these bonuses for the election board, which is good, because it's really hard to find people to work for the elections. You can stay in, you can just vote silent. So it's something we've been doing every, for every election, how long, Nikki?
I really can't remember, at least the last four or five.
Okay, okay. So do we have a motion to approve the election bonuses in the amount of $8,000?
Would you have it in budget, Rick?
Yep, yep.
I'll move.
Move by Shane. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Perry. All in favor signify by saying aye. Posed, silent?
Silent.
Silent.
Too silent, motion carries. Okay, Nikki?
Okay, and then the other one is just to sponsor two teams for the 2024 Indian Summer Classic, whereas, I think the first one, we do have some people picked out, and then the second one would be a random draw from the employees who wanted to sign up.
The 2024 Indian Summer Classic is August 15, and the proceeds are going to the boys and girls clubs in Net Lake and Vermillion. The tribal council usually sponsors two teams. One is already filled, but we do take a lottery of employees that might want to play for the other one. So are you guys okay with sponsoring two teams for the 2024 Indian Summer Classic? Do we have a motion to approve the sponsorship of two teams?
Move.
Move by Perry.
Second.
Seconded by Tara.
No, I did, that was Robert.
Was that Robert? Oh, I'm sorry, your light was on, okay.
I was like, Perry, me?
Now you sound like Perry. Motion by Robert, seconded by Tara, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Gosh darn, okay. Okay, next. Okay, next, we have Jessa Boyer. Welcome, Jessa.
Hello, good morning.
Bonjour. Bonjour.
Thank you for taking the time today. I am, uh, in Ely with my grandpa Gary Donald, who wanted to join today to discuss some of these topics that I brought to the council. I want to be concise, to not waste anyone's time, because I know how valuable your time is and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me today. Topic number one that I would really like to discuss is the banishment of non-band members who have violent order for protections on band members. For example, I have an order for protection that has been in place for 13 years against Christopher Ryan Mayo. He is a non-band member. He had, uh, just recently was in jail for attempting to shoot children and police officers. And three years ago, he walked right into Gary Donald's house. I was, uh, contacted by my grandpa and BIA did nothing. They did not arrest him, they did not do anything, and he was able to walk in and he could have harmed a band member, an elder. So I'm very passionate about getting this particular person banished from our reservation. I have unfortunately had to update my order for protection to include far too many addresses that I have to be on, on the reservation, and that should not be the case. I should not have to keep going back to court to add further addresses to my order for protection. So I am asking the council if there can be a resolution to banish non-band members who have order for protections on band members.
Jeff, um, is that something we could add, um, to our code? Because this isn't the first time I think this has happened. I think we did it previously, um, to protect our, our tribal members from those people that are, um, hurting them. Um, and so, Jeff, is that something we can put into our code or, um?
Yeah, the, the current tribal code allows council to issue orders for the banishment. There is, there's no provision right now that, um, as sort of Jessa was discussing, has, um, a proactive banishment for anyone who fits into a category, like having a protective order. Um, so it is a case-by-case basis right now that council considers banishment. Um, but I think we could, we could look at proactive banishment provisions as long as, you know, the definitions and are, are clear, so the code is, there's not any ambiguity about who it does or doesn't apply to.
Because I know we've had band members that have come back to the reservation, you know, moved back or whatever, and, um, some of the, um, significant others or spouses have, that, that they have this OFP on has, have tried to follow them here. And, you know, law enforcement's hands are tied, um, with regards to that. How does this, um, how does this fit into VAWA? Jeff, does it?
Well, the, the VAWA jurisdiction that the band can exercise is, is, um, you know, specific to certain domestic violence and other crimes committed by non-tribal members. It's a, you know, it's this recognition of the band's inherent sovereignty in that area by Congress. That is separate, um, from, you know, the inherent authority that the council has to exclude or banish band members or non-band members, any individuals who would pose a public safety threat. Um, so I guess it's related in the sense that it could apply to the same individual, but the council's banishment authority is really separate from VAWA and is just, you know, inherent in its own, in your own authority as the governing body to, to banish.
The, the reason I ask that, um, Jeff, is that, um, when we do banishment, um, you know, law enforcement says that all we can do is if they come on the reservation is charge them with trespassing. And so that's why I was wondering about, um, the VAWA, because that holds more of a, a legal sense against non-Indians than just escorting people off for trespassing. That's why I mentioned it.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point, and I think there have been conversations too about, um, federal, any applicable potential federal trespassing, um, violations that could come into play if someone violates an exclusion order, and I think more coordination with the US Attorney's Office on kind of those remedies would be, would be helpful.
Okay.
Um, Jeff, Shane here, I think that we need, um, we need to basically work on strengthening that, that aspect, when, if, when, uh, the council banishes somebody from the reservation and they come onto the reservation and violate that, there needs to be a stiffer penalty for that, not just a trespassing. That seemed like a little slap on a hand.
Right, and I think we can look at, you know, the, the criminal, you know, the, the criminal sanctions against a non-tribal member are, are limited. Um, it's really, really unfortunate, it stems back to a late seventies US Supreme Court decision about criminal jurisdiction over non-tribal members. Um, but I, I certainly think that, um, whether it's, you know, coordination with St. Louis County now with an MO, um, with that new MOA in place, coordination with the US Attorney's Office, strengthening any civil provisions, um, in the code, I think there's definitely conversations to be had about shoring that up.
I think too, is that, you know, when they have these order for protections and, and stuff like that in place too, is that, and they violate that order for protection and also, um, come on to the, they're onto the reservation when they're banished, we should be contacting the FBI on that, because I'm pretty sure that they'll be able to do something as well.
Kinda waiting for Jeff. Okay. Okay, um, Jessa, it sounds like, um, first of all, I think there's avenues that we can take to put something in the code, but, um, the banishment, um, uh, issue with you directly, that can be taken care of right away.
Thank you.
But, I mean, for others, I, I appreciate you bringing it up, because it's not just you, there, we've had this with others and we need to address it, so I appreciate you bringing it up.
I appreciate it, thank you. Uh, I'll go into section D of, uh, the agenda regarding the handling of registered sex offenders. I know that there are non-band member sex offenders who have and are willing to be living on the reservation. Um, I don't, I don't agree with that. I don't think that we should have registered sex offenders who are non-band members living on the reservation, and I know that this is a community-wide issue, it is not a personal issue. Um, I do think that band members who are registered sex offenders should have to go through a sex offender treatment if they are going to reside on the reservation, and that's what I wanted to address today with the council.
Jessa, I like what you brought up, um, with the sex offenders. Um, uh, there's not been any talk, we've talked about, you know, the, the, um, uh, the footage when it comes to where they can live and this kind of thing, but you actually go into, um, have they undergone counseling and/or have they sought necessary education on the impact, uh, you know, things that they have done. And I don't know how that works, um, you know, and, um, uh, I know Melissa Wright is, uh, working on the sex offender stuff now, um, for Vermillion and Net Lake by, you know, notifying people, getting our, uh, Sorna code up to, up to, um, up to snuff, so, um, maybe, I don't know if that's something that could be incorporated into the Sorna where they have to have some, if they come on the reservation, or even on, on our ordinances or whatever, if they come on the reservation that they have to show proof of any type of, um, rehabilitative, um, training or education that they got, and if they didn't, that, and they would have to have it. Is that what you're saying, Jessa, or just keep them off?
I think there's solutions to both, uh, that the council could look into. I do know that for band members that reside on the reservation, there's the Minnesota Sex Offender Program that is a solution to band members. I think that non-band members who are sex, registered sex offenders, I don't personally believe that they belong on their, their reservation.
Okay, okay. I, go ahead.
I'd just like to add on to that, you know, um, previously the council has been meeting with the, um, tribal court and we had a meeting, I think it was like a couple weeks ago, regarding a sex offender registry and, and, um, the, uh, 2,000 foot, 2,000 feet rule and all that, and I think that's something that we should be, um, addressing with the court again when we have our next meeting regarding sex offender and registry, is that Luke, if you could make a note of that, to bring this stuff up, so that when the time comes and we meet with the court again, we can get that addressed and, and, um, I like her idea of where, maybe we should look to which one should be permitted onto the reservation and which one shouldn't be, the ones that are most likely to reoffend and say, no, they shouldn't be on the reservation, period.
I know, Jessa, that, I believe we have a meeting on Friday regarding Sorna, regarding the sex offender, um, issue, so we can bring that up on, on Friday and, you know, it's about protecting our communities and our, um, our communities, um, need to be safe. And so I really, um, I really like your idea, the education, like you said, for the band members through the Minnesota Sex Offender Program, but also, um, the non-band members, because really, when it comes to it, what legal recourse do we have if they do something?
Yes, thank you. Um, if, if it's okay, I would like to, um, propose doing, uh, letter C about housing.
Okay, go ahead.
So I would like to discuss employment, that's letter D. Um, I know that I have personally had issues with trying to obtain gainful employment with voice port. I have applied for a couple positions and I have been given denial letters that were unsuspecting to why. It, it does not make sense as to why my education, my background, my history as an educated band member has been overlooked. I have had over 20 years' experience in director, managerial, and other positions since I was 18 years old. I'm currently 38 years old, I have a bachelor's degree, I have a minor in entrepreneurship, and I'm just confused as to why my education is overlooked as a band member, and I know that I am not the only band member that this is going on with. So I just would like the council to, to hopefully convene about this issue.
Jessa, um, I know that we have, um, we have the tribal government positions and then we have Fort Tembay positions, and I'm assuming that you have, you've applied on each side, right? Okay.
That's correct.
So it's at both, both areas. I know that when it comes to employing, uh, band members, that, um, that's been one of the top priorities for the, um, tribe, but also I know that there's, um, if I can say like loopholes or gaps, it seems, when it comes to employing our band members. And, uh, those are things that the council really needs to look at, because, um, that's who we're here for, is our tribal members, our band members, and to provide those services to them and, and have the best staff that we can do it. And, um, you know, I'm not sure what happened with your applications, um, you know, because we don't see the applications and that kind of stuff. Um, so I think that's something that the council really needs to start looking at and, and doing it in a fair manner, um, because I see, um, I see, um, some band members getting, um, getting positions and I see others that aren't, and, uh, it's like, it just depends on the position and, and who they are, and, uh, that's not right. It does, it shouldn't matter, uh, people's names or, um, political views or anything like that. Um, it's about employing our band members, no matter what, whether you like them or not. Um, it's who can do the job. So I, I've seen that throughout the years, many years, I've seen that where band members have been overlooked, uh, for positions when, um, they really didn't even get a chance. And, uh, so I, I really, um, I know that right now we have changed our employment, um, on the government side. The council used to hire, um, the individuals in executive session and, uh, but now we've, we don't do the hiring anymore through the council, it's done through committees in the departments, the directors have that authority, but it's done through, um, a committee in that department along with the director or supervisor, and then they make the selections. And so the council's been taken out of it, because we've seen, um, years, and I, I've seen it, because I've been here so long, is I've seen years of, um, people that were recommended for positions, um, and the councils, not, not, I'm not saying this council, but councils, um, did not go with the, the recommended person or whatever, so the council, uh, decided that, you know, it might be better if the directors who know what they're looking for, and we do stress that they, that they do hire band members. So, um, that's one way we're trying to, um, speed up the hiring process, but also, um, deal with the employment issue. I don't know, any other council members wanna talk?
Um, regarding that, you know, with, with the employment of band members, um, myself, um, I've been, um, alone on some of the situations where the band member was selected and I try to fight for the band member, and, um, but that's just, you know, me as one council member, I, I can't, I can't change everything. I'm just one council member, and, um, for, and I am for a band member being hired, and when we agreed to do this process where the council's taken out of the hiring process and, and, and giving to the departments, one thing that I've stressed is that I don't wanna see the departments and all that selecting good friends or their buddies or their, their best chums, and it's like, if that's what they're doing, then I think we as a council need to take that back and say, um, or review them every once in a while. Did you hire your best friend just, just for the sake of hiring them? And if they did, then, then I think this council needs to say, well, hey, we should take that back then. You know, and, and I'm for band members, thank you.
Nikki?
I just wanted to point out, there was a comment online, um, what, or a question, what is the percentage of band members working for the government and enterprises? Anyone knows that?
Last time I knew, and I'm not sure when these figures were done, but it was 80% for the government side and about 24 to 25% for Fort Tembay. And the businesses, I think, is all together, so, Miranda?
Good morning, uh, Jessa, my name is Miranda Lilia. Uh, I'm the Human Resources Director here for the tribal government. Um, if you wanna call me and talk specifics for the positions that you applied for with us, please do that, okay?
I will, thank you so much.
Sure. Um, and just, uh, comment, um, response to Shane's comments, yes, our directors now ratify our applicants. Um, council has put in place that they must go with the number one recommendation, and if they do not select the number one recommendation, then they must put it in writing why. And so whenever our directors are ratifying, I can't even think of a recent time where they didn't go with number one, uh, but they would put it in writing, and if council asked for that information, it would be available within HR. Um, but like I said, I can't remember a time really recently that the, that the director didn't go with the first recommendation. I see it more as, hey, we need more people, so can we hire two or all of the applicants? You know, that comes back from directors and, and we do allow that. Thank you.
Thank you, Miranda. I would suggest, um, for everybody out in the audience, that, um, if people feel that they, you know, they should let us know about if they feel, um, neglected when it comes to getting a job, um, because if we don't know about it, we can't address it. So I encourage people to send in, uh, letters or, uh, emails or whatever, um, with regards to that, because I know there are some tribal members that have been doing that. Um, they'll email the council or they're, contact them by phone or text or whatever to make them aware of those issues, so, um, we'll, we'll keep on that.
Thank you. I, I'll go to, to section E regarding communication. I, I do think that communication as a whole needs to be addressed, um, specifically regarding, one, why band members aren't being selected for employment purposes. I, I do understand that there are other qualified non-band members who have, you know, high pay. non-band members who have, you know, high paid positions. But I do think that that communication needs to be very clear and not just a blanket, small email saying, you know, why, why you are not selected. Also, communication as a whole needs to be adjusted regarding the websites for Boysport, Fortune Bay, and Boysport Business Development Corporation. Also that communication needs to be very crystal clear across all social medias that people from all ages, from, from nine to 92, should be able to have proper access to information across Boysport. I think that this is a, an ongoing issue and it's not just for myself. I think this is a community wide issue. I don't really have exact solutions to propose today, other than an update on the website, updates on social medias, and, and having things be very clear across the board on how communication is handled for the reservation, for council meetings, for issues such as the ones that I'm addressing today.
Thank you for that.
Or possibly, I'm sorry, or possibly a members only website that is closed to only band members. Possibly a website where it's just band members having access to that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessa. And I know that I think it was last week or the week before, we have set up a communication meeting with all our senior management and also with our CEO from the Development Corps and our GM from Fortune Bay. And this is to address the communication you're talking about. Websites, Boysport has been working on a new website for over a year now. And so we, we know we need to improve a lot on communication. And we were just talking yesterday about putting our ordinances and our laws and those types of things like the conservation ordinance, the, what else were we talking, code of ethics? All that stuff needs to be on the website so band members can have access to it. So that's, we are, when is that meeting Luke, for communication?
Next Monday.
Yep. So Monday we'll be having a meeting on that and we, we will be trying to address it because it is, it's a huge problem that we've had for many years. So we're going to try, get on top of this and get it right. So thank you for that.
I'd like to add also that we had to amend or change and some, what was that we just talked about yesterday with the, with the minutes? The minutes weren't being posted on our website. And I, that's one of my duties that needs to happen. And I said, all of them need to be posted. Cause I noticed only a few from RTC meetings. And then they would skip a, a meeting or so. And so we changed that. We voted to have all of the minutes. So there was some minutes that were categorized as partial, what was that, partial?
Protected.
Excuse me.
Protected information.
Yeah, partially protected information. So we changed that and all of the minutes are going to be posted on the website now. So that had to, the council had to vote on that. So that's one change that we did for transparency. Oh, yeah, except for executive session, of course.
Big Witch?
Gary Donald.
Who's you, Gary?
Yes. Thank you for listening to me for just a few minutes. But I got a couple of things to say here. And, and I know that we have band members that are educated. They know a lot about the reservation. They've worked at Fortune Bay. They're educated. They got a lot of history in regards to the reservation. But still, we have non-band members hired in those positions that are making decisions for our people, for our, for our band members. The non-band members making decisions for our band members. And we have band members out there that I know have the qualifications, the backgrounds, the experience, have worked at Fortune Bay, and have a lot of education in regards to what the band, the band land is, our treaty rights, all that kind of stuff. But still, we have non-Indian people bossing our Indians alone, our, our band members. And I'm wondering why those things are happening. When Fortune Bay was built back in the eighties in regards to having this place established to, to see that our people eventually would have the leading jobs on the reservation. To say, hey, I worked here for 30 years. I can retire. I've raised my kids here. I've educated them. I put bread and butter on the table and now I can retire. But it's not happening that way. Instead of that, we have non-band members in there bossing our band members around in the highest paid positions on, on, and, and else they have Fortune Bay. And I'm wondering why those things are being happened? Why the council don't take a look at, at this guy that's being hired for a non-band member that doesn't, no, that, that, that doesn't know anything about the reservation, doesn't know anything about the history of the reservation, doesn't know anything about the treaty rights of the reservation, and those kinds of things. And I'm wondering why that's happening today? And the, and our casino and stuff has been in, in existence for so many years now, and none of that is coming into place where our band members are getting those jobs, those kind of paying positions. And I know of two of the people right now that have worked at Fortune Bay and have the experience and know a lot about the gaming industry up there. And I'll, I'll give the names of them. One is Rick Anderson and the other one is Gary Gotchnick. And they both know the background of our reservation and they're band members.
Thank you, Gary. Good to see you.
And I think, and I think everybody looks at that today, what's happening with our people.
Gary, there are some things that we're trying to implement to, to, I, I want, I want to say like training or internships or succession planning for tribal members to go into leadership positions, to move up into the ranks of the tribal government or Fortune Bay. But planning and with our 477 workforce program is to give our band members the tools they need to, to be able to work, to be able to get to work and to have trainings that can, and that can help them in, whether it be hospitality at the bay, or whether it be a director position at the bay, or admin assistant here, whatever. I really think too though, that we need to get into the schools, because right now we have a position with our cannabis program that we've had no band members apply. And it's a band member position. And it's been posted since June 24th, I believe. And that's the comply, the, what is it called, Luke?
Regulatory Commission Director.
Regulatory Commission Director. That's a specific band member position and we can't get anybody to apply. So I don't know if we need to market it more, or how do we market ourselves more. But that's the other thing we're trying to do too, is learning how to market ourselves. And nowadays, even with band members living outside of the reservation boundaries, there's this hybrid option now for people to work from home and that type of thing. But we do need to do a lot with recruitment and education and succession planning and internships for our band members. I'd like to see our programs, Malax goes into the eighth grade to recruit young people to come work for the tribe. And I think we need to do better at that. But then we also need to do better at our hiring practices. And, you know, again, we do stress that band members be hired. And so I guess that's what I have to say. Shane?
I got one more thing to say here. And plus, we do have band members that are, that have, that have been working at Fortune Bay in good positions that have let go for political reasons. And I'll give you one instance. My granddaughter, Joanna Boyer, worked at Fortune Bay for over 20 years in different positions. And she was an MOD when she got let go. She didn't get let go. She, she left because the, the executive director at the time told me, the, I can't remember what the name, the guy's name, Adam his name was. So Adam, one thing I want to tell you right now, Mr. Adam, I don't want you to give Joanna Boyer a raise, a qualification, whatever you call it, what do you, what do you, what do you call it?
A raise or a, a position?
No, what, when you, when you, I, I had it down in me when I worked at the, qualifications, not qualifications, but a, saying what kind of a job you did. That's a word for that.
Um.
Okay. Anyway, he told her exactly, and he told Adam exactly, I don't want, I don't want her to getting any raises, any promotions, or anything in, in regards to the position she's in right now. And that's when she was an MOD. And Adam felt guilty about that, but, because he asked the, the executive director, whatever was that at the time, why you, are you saying that you don't want her to be raised, raises or promotions? He said, because she's Gary Donald's daughter, granddaughter. That's the reason, because of Gary Donald. And she's her granddaughter. So Adam called her in one day and told her, I got something to tell you, Joanna. He said, I know you're not going to like what I'm going to say. But before I talk to you about it, that I want somebody in here as a witness to hear exactly what I'm telling you. So he brought this person in to be a witness to hear him what he was telling Joanna. And he told Joanna, he said, Joanna, he said, I got to tell you something right now. He said, that I was giving orders not to give you any qualifications, any raises, or any promotions, or anything into any other positions other than what you at right now. And he asked me, I asked, he asked me why, and I told him because he's Gary Donald's granddaughter. Now there are some of the reasons some of our people have left Fortune Bay, right? Because of political things that happened up there. And we've lost a lot of good people, band members, that had that good job up there because of those kinds of things that are happening. And those things shouldn't take place. If you have a good employee, that employee should be let known that they are a good employee. Something should be done for them to, to keep them, to keep them at the, at, at the bay or wherever on the reservation to be employed. But I, I was one of the guys that established Fortune Bay. And also the reason we did that at the time is we knew that we didn't have the qualified people to come in and run the business the way they should be, and that we would have to hire some non-band members. But one of the things that we said at that time was, what you do, and you train this person, and you hire him as an assistant or whatever, and you train that person to take over that job. Like you said just a little while ago, we have to have, have some training for our, for some of our band members.
Someone has their hand up. Donna?
I hope you're paying attention. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning. Thank you. This is a very good topic. Thank you Jessica for bringing it forth. And for Gary's words there with regards to Fortune Bay and his involvement in establishing that casino and enterprises for the band members and for after employment. And yeah, it saddens me to see, and just like Jessica and many others, I too am one of those band members that can't get hired. And you know, I'm not afraid to talk about it, share my story. So for those that want to, feel free to reach out to me. But I applied for the Health and Human Services Director position. And I was not selected. They repulsed the job and created it as a CEO for Health and Human Services. Didn't change much in the job description per se as much, but still hired a non-band member. I understand he is a native. So that's, that's great. What I do like to know more about the retention recruitment plan that you have planned to hire in for Boysport band members. And you know, as Gary said, there's no reward for the band members to work for the tribe. And so that would be a plus too, to see, you know, band members being rewarded. And yeah, and how do we overcome the, I guess, the discouragement, the mistreatment of individuals that cannot get hired there? How can we, how can a tribe, you know, pull us together to become one and to become strong again? We are, we are lacking that, you know, togetherness and, and working as one. And so I would love to see this plan that you're talking about, Kathy. And yeah, I would like to see, what are you doing day to day or month to month, year to year to, to hire band members and to treat the band members that are working for you, you know, with fair communication, fair wages, fair, you know, promotions? What, what are you doing for that? So that's my challenge to this council is to, yeah, how can we, because this all affects, you know, individually, emotionally, those, I mean, mental health issues, you know, we, we don't even have a behavioral health where we can, you know, that's, that's saddens too, that we can't go there and the, we don't have no therapist, you know, yeah, it's all online, but our own people. So I guess there's a lot of work that the tribe needs to do with regards to employment. So I thank you for listening to me and thank you Gary and Jessica for bringing this forth. And yes, let's heal and let's move forward and let's treat our people right.
Big Witch?
To continue on with the employment discussion regarding that commission, the Director of Commission for the Cannabis Program, I have considered applying for it. But again, I don't want to be discouraged if I am just unselected because of an, an email where they haven't looked into, you know, my qualifications or background. So I, I wanted to apply for that position, but I have felt discouraged and I have felt unappreciated for my, my education, my background, and my abilities.
Thank you for that, Jessa. And I, if I, I've been trying to encourage you to apply for that position, but I know, I know about how you feel. And I understand totally how, how that has impacted you. But I'd still like to encourage you to apply. If we don't get a band member to apply for that position, we're going to end up going with a non-band member. Because in order to get our cannabis program up and running, we need this position in place. And we're, and you'll see about the cannabis update a little later, kind of where we're, where we're going. But the other thing, thank you for that also, Donna. I think that as a whole, and maybe with the communication meeting, because we've always done things that side and this side, you know, Fortune Bay and, and government. And we need to come together and come up with a plan that the whole reservation can have in place and that we follow. And like the rewards, you know, I hate to say it, but if you're, if you're, if you do a hundred good things and you do one bad thing, you're only going to be remembered for that bad thing. I think it's changing the, we need to change the, the way we do things, because it's, it's not like it was in the past. It's really changed a lot. And the other thing is, I really think that the, the, and this is just for any council or any school board or any, any committee, that we quit looking at names and just look at people to make sure that our band members are getting employed. to make sure that our band members are getting employed. It shouldn't matter political status or or who they're related to or anything. It's about getting them a job. That's all it is. And I hope someday that'll change with with new people or whatever. But we need to start looking at that. So.
Thank you for that. I know we have a couple more topics under the agenda that I'd like to briefly go over, which I know are not easy fixes. Enrollment for our people. I know that this is not just a me problem. This is an us problem. And we really need to discuss how we're not going to disappear into the future.
Yep.
I know that this is not an easy fix or a solution, but it's something that can't be faked. And it it needs to be continuously discussed as as we fade away. And as our blood quantum is disappearing. That's what the tribe, that's what the federal government intended on doing and it's being successful. So I I just wanted to address that as a point on the agenda that I'd like to to keep bringing up and proposing that we continue this conversation. I had two more topics, real briefly. I know we're already at ten twenty-one and we all have busy days. Regarding economic development, I'm, like I said, I'm an educated band member who is an entrepreneur. I specifically have brought a business of my own doing without any support from the tribe, the band, and all. And it's a very, it will be a very lucrative business. The original strategic plan was to have it actually be up here in Ely, Minnesota. And I helped my business partner drive that business to Boysport and to Fortune Bay specifically. I have been met with issue after issue getting support. And specifically, and I will name names right now, the new general manager, Joshua Thermas of the resort, has created a lot of issues with getting our contract done. And I know that Drew Ebert and I have been working diligently on getting the business up and going with full support. But I need now the council to be stepping in and taking a look at what I'm trying to do as a business owner. That it's not just a small little thing here, where I'm getting phone call after phone call about people wanting to book, people that are coming up from Twin Cities, people that would have never stepped foot onto Fortune Bay. I am helping bring that traction to Fortune Bay. People that would have never stepped foot in the casino, I am bringing people up there. And I am encouraging them to stay at Fortune Bay. I'm encouraging them to go play and game at Fortune Bay and eat at Fortune Bay. And I am asking the council to look into this. It is Up North Outdoor Adventures, Doing Business As, What Moves Psychothreats. I actually sent out an email last week inviting the entire council to come out free of charge so that you can see what I'm trying to do. So I know that that's a big topic. And and if we need a table, that that's fine. Because I have one more topic that I'd like to cover, which is immediate housing needs. So I'll pause there.
Jessa, I want to say, I've seen your your business. You've done a great job of putting it on social media. It's great to see the people that are enjoying themselves on your boat. And I think that we're going to be talking about the S S B C I program, which is a small business program for tribal members and descendants. And I think that any way we can support our businesses, and by adding your, our band member businesses, by adding your business, that's another amenity to Fortune Bay, to bring people there. And, you know, we 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 know it's tourism that we need to to capitalize on. So I think that we were made aware of your situation and we talked to Drew about it and, and, you know, that type of thing. And hopefully that got resolved. But we know that you had a tough time there, starting getting the business going. We will, I I'd like to go on your boat. We'll pick a date, just to see, because I know you do a lot of education on there for the tribe, about the tribe, about Vermillion, about the lake, about the eighteen fifty-four treaty area. So that education is key. And a lot of people don't know about us up here. But I do want to say that, you know, we do need to support our band member businesses. And the more we can support them, and maybe maybe by resolution. Because I know that, you know, they have that Buy America, you know, Buy Boysport. We want to, we also want to get our tribal members that have beadwork and arts and crafts and stuff sold at the bay. And, you know, we want to incorporate our entrepreneurs out there to be successful. So maybe once we get the C C S S B C I program up and running, that we can come up with a plan or a program that assists the band members in their business ventures.
Thank you for that. I do want to mention that, you know, the business that I am running, it's over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in overhead costs that has been put into it, not including the amount of money that we pay for our captains, which are U S Coast Guard captains and first mates. And my plan is to engage in employing band members first as a priority. And that's just me. I'm a single person on a single boat. And that's, that's exactly what it is. And I would like to be, I would like the council and I would like Boysport and Fortune Bay to be more in support of this business because it is a lot of work. And I have been putting day in and day out hours, twenty-four seven, I'm working on this so that it can be up and running, so that I might be able to focus on something like going after that director position. And I need the support from the council as an entrepreneur. And I'm not sure how that looks, and I don't have a solution for it.
Okay. Any comments, council?
Yes. First off, you know, regarding the cannabis position, I did argue for and try to push for an education requirement. I did do that. And I did bring that up, that it was, by not making that requirement was a slap in the face to our band members that do have degrees, you know. And unfortunately, I was just one council, I'm just one council member. I can't do it alone. As for Fortune Bay, you know, unemployment of band members and all that, one thing I asked for recently was a breakdown of the department by department, how many band members work in each department. And that was provided, I do believe, at the last Development Corporation meeting or the previous one. And now the next step will be, how can we increase those numbers? And and how can we retain our band member employees? You know, as for the incentive, you know, for band members working for the for the tribal government or Fortune Bay, if we do it for a band members, we're going to have to do it for the all the employees in general. Right now, the tribe doesn't have the means to do it. You know, and but that's what I think that's what we need to concentrate on doing is getting businesses that can generate revenue for the tribe. We can't rely, keep relying on Fortune Bay, you know, and we got to expand out more. And, you know, I think that, you know, with this marijuana business, we really need to get going on this. We are so far behind, so far behind, you know. But that that topic's coming up later on. As for the mental health department at the Health and Human Services, I did try to push for that program to be built up, to have our own people on staff here in the reservation, working up at that Health and Human Services. And I'll continue to push for that. Thank you.
I would like to add something, too. I recently had a meeting with Eugene Summers for the White Earth Band of Wujibwe. And he's a district representative and a good friend of mine. And I just kind of picked his brain over the cannabis business and the prospects of it. And, you know, the way he made it sound, it's just like, you know, he said, you know, if you work with us two months, and I'm speaking for myself, not the entire council, I just had the meeting with him. The way he made it sound is, I asked him a bunch of questions for three hours. We just spoke and met. And he's, you know, he gave me like a two-month timeframe. So I want to kind of commit that right now that we do. We are behind on the cannabis business industry. And it's, each month that goes by, you know, the numbers he gave me were per, I believe, fifty pounds of marijuana, they could, Boysport could be, could be potentially make two hundred thousand dollars a month, monthly, not guaranteed, but that's the prospect of it. So I'm just kind of curious, you know, I, I really, we really need to jump on this. And I think that you, you know, I can't speak for the whole council, but I I know how it feels when you really, you know, feel like you earned the right to apply for a job and you really want it badly. Language and culture, that it's a really competitive, I didn't know how competitive it was until I jumped into it. That's my background. So I mean, I, you know, I can honestly, you know, I don't know how you feel, but I I do, I'm very sympathetic towards your situation, Ms. Boyer.
Thank you so much, Perry. I appreciate that. As we're already at ten thirty, the big topic that I'd like to bring up that I saved for the end is about the immediate housing needs. And I know that my grandpa, Gary Donald, wants to mention something about that. And I do know that Ms. Diana Goodsky is also hopefully still on the call, who would also like to speak about the issues with the the housing. I have been up here since twenty twenty, back on the reservation, and I have been met with a stone wall trying to build a home up here. I have been met with nothing but issue after issue with with getting loans, getting things approved through B I A, through the Minnesota Chippewa Tribe. And I know that this is a very large topic, but it's one that we are in dire straits right now. I will, this is just a personal thing, is after that big storm that happened, my roof is leaking. I'm living in my mother's home right now. And there is black mold growing on my daughter's ceiling. Luckily, she's at summer camp right now for an entire month. But I am embarrassed. This is hard for me to deal with on a day-to-day basis. I wake up every single morning and I go to bed every single night scared about my housing and living situation. And I know that I'm probably not the only band member that's dealing with this, living on the reservation or being able to try to build and and be sustainable up here. We, I want to be on the reservation. I want to give back to this community. I want to bring my education up here. I want to bring my my spirit here, and I want to help however I can help. But I can't do that if I don't have a proper home to live in. And that's a real big topic. I know my grandpa would like to say something. And then I would really like Ms. Diana Goodsky to speak up on her behalf because I know she has some things that she would like to say as well.
Maybe he didn't want to say anything.
Thing I'd like to say about that is this. When I drive around, ride around the reservation, I see a lot of vacant homes on the rez that are not being used. And like Jessa just got through saying, I can remember when she first came and come up to the lake, I may have to say, and told me, Grandpa, I want to build a home on the rez. And how do I go about that? So I give her some information on what she should be doing in regards to applying for housing. And the thing of it is, today, our band members, again, here we go again, our band members want to build a home on the reservation. They go to the, through the, through the the areas that they have to go through to apply for their housing. But once they've made that first move, right there, it seems to stop. Something is not happening. It should be A, B, C, just like that. Number one, number two, number three, hey, you're in your home. It should only take those kinds of steps to, for our band members to build their homes on the rez. Instead of having to wait, 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 like Jessa just got through saying how long she's been waiting to, to try to get her, her agreements and everything in place so she could, right, right from day one, start building and move in and move into that house within a year. Construction and all that thing done. And that's what's happening with our band members there. They're not, they're not, they're not getting the housing in the, in the way they need it right now, today. They have to wait two, three years before, and then sometimes they don't even get a chance to build. And I'm wondering why that is, why, why there's, why there's no steps in place where our band members can say, hey, yeah, I applied for my house about a year ago, and here I am living in now. Those kinds of things should be taken care of for our band members. And why is it that, that, that there aren't certain steps made for them to to get into their home as soon as they can? There's something, there's something slowing the process down somewhere.
Thank you, Gary. Is Diana coming on, Jess?
Diana is on the call. Diana, are you, are you there? And are you available to speak up? You might need to be unmuted.
Oh, hi. There we go. I was trying to get everything going. And I appreciate your time, everyone. Thank you for having me. And thank you, Jessa, for bringing up such great topics of conversation. I'm, I want to speak, try to be succinct about this. And I want to talk about the the housing situation regarding the lease, because that's the only situation that I have. As you all know, it took me forever to get the lease. And I was so happy to finally get it. Thank you. But this was right before COVID. And then I'm going to give you a brief history because there's a purpose behind that. After COVID, or when COVID happened, everything kind of shut down. And it was understood that we couldn't get people in to do the survey and and things like that. So I understand that that delay. But while that was going on, I was also trying to find out how to get a loan. And, you know, Gary had said earlier that there is a, a need for a set procedure. And I I couldn't agree more because part of what I noticed happening, besides the COVID issue, is there seem to be not a discernible steps to follow in order to build on your lease or on your property. And in my research, part of what I discovered was, you know, I'm a veteran. And there is a program through the Veterans Affairs called the Native American Direct Loan. When I tried to ask the previous person in the leasing department, they had no idea about what, about the Native American Direct Loan. And then I tried to contact St. Paul. I spoke to one lady and she said that the problem with this program is that the reservations don't know enough about it. And the progress is very slow because they don't know anything about the program. And so it causes issues at the V A. And so it's a very little-used program. I find that just reprehensible because as veterans, we have earned the right to take advantage of every program that they put in place for us. And I, after hitting roadblock after roadblock with the, with this loan type, both at Boysport and in St. Paul, I started, I considered other programs. But the fact is, I got, it was, it became a matter of principle to me because I thought, I, I should be able to use this loan type. Currently, this loan is offered at two point five percent, no down payment. You might have to pay a funding fee, which is equivalent to a primary mortgage insurance on a regular loan. However, that's waived completely if you're a disabled veteran, even at ten percent. So here we're looking at a program for veterans with no down payment, no insurance. You do have to meet the income requirements, but the credit score requirement is, it's similar in the Minnesota Chippewa Tribe where it's not that heavy. You just have to show that you can pay it. And they are very gentle on your credit report, if you will. So the principle mattered to me. I was like, I, I should be able to to build using this Native American Direct Loan. But, so that's the history on that. So where I am today is the Native American Direct Loan Office has finally been restaffed up after COVID. I've gotten in touch with the director there who's issued me an application. I've gotten in touch with the director there who's, um, issued me, uh, an application. But the, um, the concern that I have, this has been over three years, right? Three years trying to build a, trying to build over there. And I deserve, our veterans deserve the best treatment possible. But the, so here's my concerns. Number one, I've noticed the change in, in, um, job at the leasing office has, there's no continuity. And I wondered if there's a standard operating procedure that exists in that office that allows any, anybody to step, step in and, and do the job. Lance has been doing a great job. He's been very helpful to me. But again, he probably had a, a large learning curve and, uh, the previous person did, uh, sorry, but did nothing to help me. And, um, they, I would, I'd like to know that. Is there a standard operating procedure in place so that anyone can step in? And then two, can we learn all we can about the Native American Direct Loan so that our veterans can, you know, take advantage of this? And, um, third, I might need to modify my lease because of the VA requirement, so that's just a heads up. But I, my concern is for the veterans and the program that exists that is beautiful. Uh, it's a beautiful program and I think that we should know how to do it so that our veterans can take advantage of this and, and basically just, you know, they deserve all that they've earned. Um, I've got a current email into the director of the, um, Veterans Affairs Native, it's called NADL. Uh, you can Google it. It's right on the va.gov website. All the requirements are there because they, they have updated it, um, in the last year. But the, um, the next question I have is if a person has a, a regular loan on their leased land, can they refinance into the NADL? Because 2.5% interest is quite sweet. Um, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Diana. Nice to see you. With regards to the, um, the housing issue, we, okay, now you guys went on, uh, on a couple of things here. Um, so what I'm going to say is, you know, we've got two housing, um, issues. One is, you know, the HUD homes that are, are empty and that we're working on to get those fixed. I know we have a lot of, um, ARPA money that's delegated to fix homes in Net Lake and Vermillion that have been sitting vacant for quite some time. So we are trying to get those, um, up to, up, I, I keep using up to snuff. Um, but there's that HUD program. You guys are more in the leasing process, uh, leasing a, leasing it and then building a home. And, um, I was made aware of that Native American Direct Loan program last year and I contacted a veteran, uh, that currently has a, a home loan about this 2.5%. I agree, Diana, this is an awesome program. But I think what lacks is that the VA is not, um, working with the tribes on how, what this is, what, what we need to do to help our band members to get this. So what I'd like to do is, um, get ahold of the VA and have them do an educational program for the tribes and delegate someone that we could have at our office to do this for our veterans, uh, on and off the reservation. Um, so I, I appreciate that because that's a, that's a huge program that I think, um, I think the veterans need to access. 2.5%, wow. That, that's pretty awesome. Um, and the other thing, um, regarding the standard operating procedures for leasing, um, I'm not sure if there's anything in place for that right now, but I know that we are going to be doing an assessment of our, um, leasing program to see, um, uh, how we can improve it, how we can improve processes and staffing. Cause we know right now we only have one person staffed in there. And that's, that's a huge program. That's not enough staffing. So how many staff would we need, this type of thing? So we are looking at our leasing program because that's been one of our, um, programs that has had numerous employees in it over the years. And papers get pushed, uh, in files and, and lost and whatever. So, um, this is another thing that we're looking at. What I'd like to see for Boysport for the future myself is a, is that we do the Hearth Act where we, we, we give our own leases to ourselves and keep the BIA out of it. Cause the BIA, BIA is a very extremely slow process and they're very picky. And, um, you know, if we can do the Hearth Act, we can do it ourselves. And Fond du Lac is doing that right now. They're doing the Hearth Act where they can issue their own leases without going through the BIA. So that's an option for the tribe and I think that's something as part of our strategic plan that we should do. Um, but yeah, I am, I, I'm all for you guys with regards to leasing and, um, you know, we, the programs that used to, um, MCT and whatever, um, I think we need to market them more for band members to apply and have them, have those programs come directly to the reservation and sit down with our people and say, this is what you need to do. From leasing to building to completion, whatever. So, um, but no, I appreciate all you guys have said with regards to the housing because it's two different areas, but, um, it's still a, it's still a need for housing, period. Go ahead, Diana.
Yes, thank you. I, I'm definitely planning on proceeding with this, uh, NADL program and, and I'm very good at record keeping. I don't mind at all keeping records and sharing whatever I can because I believe that if, if we can kind of set the tone for it and then, and get the information out there, maybe others can, you know, take advantage of it because they have to know about it in order to be able to use it. So I, I'm happy to document everything that I can about this NADL program. I'm not letting go of it. I'm not going to go to MCT. I'm not going to go to Woodlands Bake. I'm, I'm going to use this loan. So it's going to take a while, but I, I think it'll be worth it because I, I want to move home. I want to come home. I've been trying to come home for a while. I can't do it without a place to live.
Right. And we've done amendments to the leases with regards to who, whatever, um, fund, um, whoever funds your, your housing. So I know we've done that with USDA and, and MCT, so that won't be a problem. Those have been done in the past. You're welcome. Jessa? There you are.
All right. I was just seeing if Gary wanted to say anything else. Well, I appreciate your time today and thank you for my laundry list of agenda items and, and hearing me out today. Uh, I hope that these topics can continuously be, you know, brought up. Um, everything else, Jessa?
Well, the only thing I want to say right now, I just want to congratulate the, the chair lady for winning the elections. And also for Mr. Drift running, winning that district. I want to congratulate you guys for winning the election. And I want to give my, uh, my thanks to the rest of the council members that are sitting up there. I know what you guys are going through because I've been up there for 15 years. And I know what you have to do and all the issues that were given to you today. There's a lot, there's a lot of things to be thinking about there and, and those, and those are, uh, things that were on the agenda. And what I'm saying is I know you guys are doing a good job. I have to appreciate that for listening to us and listening to the, the, the things that the people have to, uh, bring before the council. I know when I was sitting on the council, what we did at the time was, is, is we never, we never had too many people coming to, asking to get on the agenda. And I don't want to make any remarks, but when I was tribal chair, what I would do first if I saw band members come into the meeting and I saw them with a notebook or anything like that, the first thing I would do was I would call for invocation, which I had Gene Goodsky give for us. And the reason I did that was because I can remember a long time ago, when I was just a young fellow, I used to follow the political leaders in Net Lake, the old guys. And I can, I could hear guys like Charlie Day and Billy Johnson, Tony Boni and all those guys when they'd get up and come to talk before their meeting. And they used to give some good blessings in regards to those that were going to be come, come before them and talk. And after they get you talking, they'd be talking in the language. And they'd ask, is there anybody there that has anything to say? Then they'd get, get on their meeting. And that's what I did when I was tribal chair and I told Gene Goodsky that. And I said, you know, Gene, I can remember a long time ago when the old Indian guys used to carry on their meetings. And I used to watch them and watch them and listen to them when they'd give their meeting and how they conducted that meeting. And, uh, that's what's happening today. I see, I, I see invocation on the, on the, on the meeting here today. But nor did, nor did they get yet silent. It's sort of silent today. But I want to really thank you for everything you keep on doing. Well, the good leaders up there, and I think you're doing a pretty good job for Boysport. And I know that you'll be paying attention to the things that were said today in regards to different issues. And again, as we said, congratulations to every one of you sitting up there. And I wish you good luck and everything you can do from now on. Thank you. McGwich.
G. McGwich, Gary. G. McGwich, Jessa. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Okay, next we have Mr. Luke Warren Schultz.
All right. Good morning again, everyone. Uh, we will first start out, um, with the vice chair vote. So how we will do this, um, this will be just with the district reps to vote on this. Um, so the chair and secretary treasurer doesn't, uh, this would not pertain to you. Um, so Shane, um, Perry and Robert, this only pertains to you. Uh, when you make a recommendation, just please, uh, I would like to make a motion and recommend so-and-so to be the district or, uh, vice chair of the Boysport Tribal Council. And then there will have to be a second and then we will be done with it. So I, I'll let you three have the floor and, um, if you need a minute or two to think about it, um, go ahead.
Luke, um, it says that the selection is from the district reps. I can, I'm also included in this because I need a vote on it and I can make a request for it also. I'm not completely left out.
Yes, I agree with that because she did vote before. She did select two before.
I think he meant that she can't be a vice chair. Why he said, we're out. Yeah, okay. Go ahead, guys. You got the floor. Rock, paper, scissors?
Just kidding.
So I can make a nomination right now? Okay, I nominate Shane Drift.
Any other nominations? Yeah, yep.
I'll second the nomination.
Nomination seconded by Tara. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Silent. Motion carried.
I could abstain from that.
No, I was kidding. Okay. One, one abstain. Sorry. Okay, well, Shane will be our vice chair. Congratulations, Shane.
Thank you, Perry. Thank you, Tara. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Robert.
Okay, next we have plane provisions, conservation code.
All right, uh, so when the plane did land in Net Lake, um, we wanted a no landing zone to be put in our policy. Um, we did work with our attorney, Jeff Holt and Chris Holm to develop what would be the easiest solution to that. Um, so we added in our conservation code, uh, section 13, that planes are, anything with a motor cannot dip or, or do anything with Net Lake. Um, is Chris on? Okay, Chris, do you want to maybe elaborate a little bit on, um, and it's in your guys' packet too. Um, it, it's pretty straightforward.
Hi, good morning.
Morning, Chris.
Um, so yeah, um, in the code, section 13 was added. Um, it's at the very end of the, uh, the abridged codes that you have. Uh, subdivision one is prohibition as, as, uh, Luke just mentioned. We're going to, um, memorialize the, um, uh, prohibition of, uh, planes, motorized vehicles on Net Lake. So the, the, the subsections of subdivision one, A through E, uh, uh, define the prohibitions. That includes, uh, obviously landing of aircraft. It also includes, which is a longstanding provision, by the way, of any, uh, taking of water out of the lake by safe, the wildfire fighting aircraft, uh, just for safety provision. It's, it's just not, it's just not safe to be, to be landing on that lake. Um, not safe to be trying to pull water out of it. Uh, you know, um, just because it's, it's shallow, uh, it has obstacles, uh, it's not safe. And, and obviously the cultural concerns as well. So, uh, subdivision one is prohibition. Subdivision two is emergency responses. Uh, these are allowances for, uh, uh, law enforcement, uh, and DNR to, uh, if necessary, go and, uh, enforce, enforce the restrictions. Uh, render aid if necessary to somebody out on the lake. If they're, if they're in trouble. Um, and, and for DNR to continue to perform its work out there. So that's, um, essentially, like Luke said, it's pretty straightforward. That's the, uh, uh, prohibition ordinance that we'd like to add into the, uh, new conservation codes.
Any questions for Chris or any comments?
Yes, um, um, I'm hoping that we can get, get this resolution passed, that we're advanced planes from landing on a lake. But my question to Chris, um, is that how do we get it listed with the state, um, to put it on their maps as, uh, you know, for aviation? To show that when people are flying around the area, like, that it pops up on their map and says, hey, I can't land on that lake on Boysport.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a good question, Shane. It is, it is hard to, to, to find it listed. Um, it's, it's, uh, St. Louis County knows, for example, that, uh, well, let's back up to the, to the incident that happened. Uh, the pilot, um, got what FAA would consider a, uh, uh, a precautionary warning of imminent weather coming in. So it wasn't even an emergency. It was a precautionary warning. The pilot should have contacted 911 or, uh, according to FAA rules, 911 in the local airport facilities, uh, uh, St. Louis County, uh, to relay the condition and ask to put down. Had they done that, which apparently they didn't, they would have been instructed to go to a more suitable lake to land because it wasn't an emergency condition. Um, and it was a precautionary condition. So, um, but, but it, it is known that, you know, by the county that, you know, it's not a landing lake, it's not a water dipping lake, but we do need to, uh, uh, somehow get that more widely publicized or listed or something like that. I don't know if Jeff is still on and he has any suggestions in that regard?
Yeah, I think I would, I would definitely recommend kind of an all-hands-on-board approach. And I think the, there, there's a need for consultation with Minnesota DNR so that they, um, are clear on their rules regarding sea plane landing within this state that, um, that tribal law, Boysport, precludes any landing. And I think that they can, you know, consult with the, with the band and we can consult the tri- tribal liaison about getting that publicized by Minnesota DNR. Uh, I also think that there is, you know, the FAA is a federal agency, um, that has consultation duties to the band. And I think that we can do some intergovernmental communication with them to, um, let them know about this change as well and coordinate on ways that they can, you know, whether it's incorporating it into their own rules or notices so that, you know, pilots are clear that it, it's a no landing area. Um, so I think both coordination at the county, state and federal level is probably the best approach to make sure that, um, you know, there's not any gaps in communication.
I think too, and we also need to get it listed so that when there's a forest fire nearby, that they can't, the helicopters that have them buckets, they can't come in and dip their bucket into our lake, to be that known as well. Then on the flip side, if somebody does land on our lake, and we need to have stiff penalties. We can't give them a little slap on the hand, "Oh, thank you for landing on our lake here, here's your plane back." I think the next time it happens, that the tribe needs to confiscate that plane and then basically put it out for a bid or as an auction, and they have to buy their plane back. Stiff penalties. Thank you.
I also think that we need to add something, if we're gonna do something about this in the future, you need to add the Atzukon part to it because people, I was reading some of the comments about when that incident happened, people were voicing their opinions, and they said, you know, some people didn't understand what the big fuss was about, but to those that have grown up here, lived here, we were told legends as kids about that lake, how sacred and spiritual it is. More specifically, you know, what I was told was, you know, "Gyushinachi giken," you know, you don't raise heck with that lake. There's money to get the band on, zagigan in there. There's spirit keepers of the lake. And then when you incorporate that, we could put it on our website in the future, why this lake, why, why we consider this lake to be untouchable? I think, you know, because then, because people don't understand, they really kind of really, I've seen the comments, they don't understand.
I'd like to add, not only by watercraft, not only by fire, by anything, by any means, taking water, yep, DOT, because that had happened when I was DNR director. They just came and, you know, took. And I kind of got into it with one of the directors. A project was happening at the time, and they said, "Well, there isn't any, there isn't any signs that says that you can't do this," you know. Well, that should be as soon as he crossed that line where our border is. Yep. So like, like an access, you know? There wasn't an access, no access sign on there. No, as soon as you cross that border of Boys' Fort, anybody, they need to know, you know, what they're doing and what they need to respect. So not only, you know, dipping for wildland fire or any other sort, any means of touching our lake.
Thanks. Okay, so are we good with these plane provision amendments in the, that have been proposed? If so, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the revisions to the conservation...
Hold on just a... Oh, oh, oh. I'm trying to find it, but does it say any means of dipping in the lake on here? Or does it only pertain to aircraft?
Doc, does it say anything in there?
The way it's written, subdivision 1, letter E, attempting to spray drop or otherwise apply chemicals or other substances from an aircraft, wait, it's provision D, including but not limited to water by means of an aircraft. So that's focused on wildland plane water collection only.
Yeah, currently, the language says by means of an aircraft, so we can revise that language to say by any means.
Yeah.
And make that change, so that's, that's, that's easy to do.
Okay. Heart Warrior?
I just wanted to say, what about contrails?
Are you, are you, are you referring to the, the trails that they, from the aircrafts?
When they fly over and make those, that smoke, and it falls down into the land and the water, aluminum filaments is what I understood that was.
Thank you.
Just to add, I, I, I've researched that topic a couple times, but not, I'm not a specialist on it, so I just...
Okay, thank you. Yes, Nikki?
Just a couple comments online. First one is Prairie Creek on 65, a water tank fills up there. And then someone responded, "I saw this happen two years ago. I called the DNR and reported it, but nothing happened." And then I seen it for the past 30 years and recent about two months ago.
Okay. Any other comments?
Anyway...
Go ahead, Gary.
This, this is about band members and non-band members again. Anyway, this old guy in Malax, he was dancing, and he had a really nice regalia on, kind of a little cloth on the bottom, cloth, and then a regalia on the bottom, and a little nice leggings and everything, he was dancing, powwowing. So Indian guy, he dancing around the circle there, and after he got through dancing, this midlady came up to him and said, "Oh," she said, "you have a nice regalia on." She said, "That's one thing I do notice, what she said, the top of your body is nice and brown," she said, "but then on your legs," she said, "they're kind of, kind of white light on the leggings," she said. And then she looked at him, he said, "What, what Indian are you?" She asked him. He looked at himself, looked at his legs, and he's talking, looked at her, "Half-breed." "I'm half-breed."
Thank you, Gary.
Anyway, he was one of the guys that brought back the powwows to Net Lake when the powwows were dying all the way back, and then jumping right in. I think the other guy that was living last time was Bill Boni, and then I can't remember that old Roy, that old, Mr. Clarence Roy's, anyway, he was on the corner that time. I can't remember the other guy that was on that. He was one of them that brought the powwows back to Net Lake. That old guy from Malax, "Yeah, I'm half-breed." "I'm half-breed."
McGwich, Gary. Okay. With the, with this plane revision, are we gonna add by other means, Jeff, then, so that we'll cover any kind of taking of water out of the lake?
Sure, we can add that and bring it back to you, or you can adopt it subject to that revision today. Either, either one works.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the plane revisions in the conservation code with the addition of the, by any means, that's gonna be added to cover all water taken out of the lake by any means? So...
I'll move.
Move by Tara. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Perry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, silent, motion carried. We'll look into that, Heart Warrior. Yeah, that, that's a good point. Thank you very much for that, G. McGwich. We will look into that.
Since Chris is on, Chris Holm, can you take note of Heart Warrior's comments and then those online comments about water taking, and then just investigate that and figure that out? McGwich?
Yeah.
I see we have a hand up.
My question is that regarding, does that include all waters going into the lake as well? Because being that, you know, water going into the lake is considered sacred and the spirits are there, I'm not sure about, but does that include all the waters coming into the lake as well within the boundaries of the reservation?
Good question. Doc?
So the band has jurisdiction over waters within, within the reservation boundaries. That, that is a good question because it, it raises, you know, issues about, you know, off-reservation activities and what may be coming in, hence the need for monitoring programs and that kind of thing. The, the, the state has its set of water quality guidelines, parameters, or whatever, and the band is developing theirs as well. So I guess what this, what this eventually leads to is our monitoring, detecting something, if our standards are, our standards will be based more on more stricter federal guidelines than state guidelines, and so if our monitoring, monitoring were to pick up something coming in from the outside, then we would have evidence to go and, and make requests or demand order investigation coming in. That's, that's sort of, I think, what we can do with the threat of, you know, outside pollutants or contamination coming in. Because you are right, the one, you know, lost river, you know, comes in from, from the orid side. The rest of the tributaries that feed into Net Lake are primarily, they come from spring and sea sources, wetland sources within the boundary, so we consider those fairly protected or very protected, actually. But it's the, it's the lost river inputs that we're concerned about.
Chris, I think also that when you mentioned the water quality standards, that I know that Malax and, not Malax, Fond du Lac and Grand Portage have higher water quality standards in the state of Minnesota. And it sounds to me, and help me, correct me if I'm wrong, but some agency actually said that the tribes' water quality standards have, businesses and companies have to comply with those because that's our standards. And I think it went through a court case, if I'm not sure, but, you know, I think we need to do that because if we have stuff coming into Net Lake from an outside source, and we have our own water quality standards, that we can do something with them, or two of them, I should say, to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, I think that's, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but that's, we can apply through EPA for our own water quality standards. I can't remember what the program, is it a 106 or whatever program it is?
Yeah, yeah, it's through, through the 106 program. And yes, federal water, federal water, water quality standards through EPA as a federally recognized tribe would apply over state standards. But the tribes, the tribes that are getting opposition from the state, if they're following federal standards, which are more stringent than the state, they're allowed to do that. So, and, and, and tribal water quality standards can be tailored to specific, you know, uses and needs and requirements as well. So, you know, it's been an ongoing issue for years, for example, about what, what chemical parameters associated with wild right should tribes adopt or develop, especially in the area of sulfate. So tribe can, can, can adopt a much higher sulfate standard that they currently have in regard to wild right, and we would do that. All right, I'm sorry, well, a much lower level standard, I should say, not a higher standard, that would be...
Okay, Chris, so maybe if we can look at the, the rivers and the streams coming in. Okay, all right. Good deal. Okay. Thank you for that question. That was very good, Teresa. Thank you. Okay, Luke. Do cannabis first? Okay.
All right. Next, I will do kind of an update on cannabis. And I will, this update is just strictly for the tribal government side and what I know so far. Ideally, that in the business sense and planning after we get this commission formed, I don't know what's going to happen right now. As of right now, on the tribal government side, it was kind of my job and our job to put together an RFP to start the Boys' Fort Cannabis Regulatory Commission. And as of right now, I do not have any applicants. The RFP is out, it is on our website. It is, the due date on that is the 24th, so we have eight days to get that in. So if you are interested in something new and unique, and, and this would be a four-year term by the tribal council, so please look at that and apply if you are interested. When we do appoint the director, the director is primarily the visionary and the creator of this commission. Now, with the business sense, I do know that there was a GM of cannabis that was out, and I know at the BFTC, there was talked about compliance. But right now, for any project, infrastructure, anything to move forward right now, we do need the regulatory commission director onsite and, and appointed for anything to move forward at this point. So again, July 24th is the end date for that, so I encourage any band member that is interested, again, in something new and unique, please apply for it.
Okay. Currently, we have Drew Ebert, our CEO, working on the cannabis project, and we have Minnesota Roots as our consultant or technical advisor. We are looking at dispensaries first. We've looked at the C store, where the laundromat is. That's a good possibility there. And then also, we are in the, we've, we're getting a prefab building that's currently available, and it can be delivered within five weeks, three to five weeks. And what that is, is it's a building that we can move wherever we need to until we can find a permanent site. So we're looking at a temporary site, possibly on the Vermillion side for this dispensary. We have been in contact with one of the tribes regarding product, and so it's just a matter of getting the contract with the tribe for the product, getting the building ordered, having some renovations done to the C store, if that's the option we're gonna take there, and then, you know, getting in business, and then hiring people to run the store. So Minnesota Roots has requested a weekly meeting now, which we will be having, and just to basically say that, you know, this is the way it goes. We've got a GM, we got our regulatory person on board, we've got our regulations and policies in place, and we're, and then after that, we're looking at a grow facility across from Fortune Bay where that open area or overflow of parking is, and that is gonna be a smaller grow facility down the line. But it does look like the state has been tinkering with the legislation that they passed a couple years ago with regards to cannabis, and the more they, the more they tinker with it, it's kind of delaying more of the process on the state side. So we really need to take advantage of this opportunity. So that's kind of the update that I think we have.
Yes, so a couple of things that I pointed out, and when we said to go with this route with the dispensary first and a grow, grow facility. Second is that, a couple of the questions I asked our CEO on the Fortune Bay side was, how much marijuana does the dispensary need to sell each month to be self-sustaining? The next question, I said, the tribe that we're looking at to buy from, can they sell us that amount each month? And if not, then what's the backup plan for that? And I think that's some questions that we need to get answered as we move forward. Miranda?
I know there was a number of applicants for the first posting. I'm wondering, has anybody reached out to those applicants and let them know that the RFP is open now?
Not that I'm aware of, Miranda.
Okay, I don't know how many were received at Fortune Bay for applicants for that first posting, but I know we had received quite a few. But I know we had received quite a few. So I would suggest council or Luke, you know, reach out to those applicants directly and let them know, hey, we have this RFP open if you are interested in submitting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Miranda, for that information. We'll get that done. So that's kind of the update on the cannabis for now.
I think that we should get a timeline written up on when this dispensary is going to be in place and when the doors are going to open so that our band members can have a grand opening and the band members are aware that, hey, the charge really moving on us. Thank you.
Will do. Okay. Luke, you have SSC, SSBCI.
Yes, this is just a revision to this process right now for you all to look at. Jeff, if you want to say a couple of things on this, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, yeah, this is the state small business credit initiative program that provides access to capital opportunities for band member businesses. The, we got some feedback from Shane requesting some revisions to the policies that council, I believe, previously adopted via poll. The document, I think you have in front of you, has, or just reviews that can take an evaluation process for loan program applicants. And they added some language to reflect Shane's requests back in the, in the second page. The first is under number three for tribal council consideration and approval of loan program requests. And the additional language just clarifies that RTC members have to comply with the RTC Code of Ethics, including the duty to recuse from voting when doing so would affect their personal financial interests. That's one example of recusal. The Code of Ethics is broader than that. It could be an immediate family member. But I just wanted to, I added that in her Shane's request about the Code of Ethics provisions and making sure that voting occurs consistent with that. And then the second revision is regarding, under the closing section, number four, that just clarifies that the loan documents for these programs should include standard remedies that you'd include in loan documents, foreclosing on security interests and other remedies, just to make sure that there's, you know, appropriate follow-up in the event of a default and that, you know, the loan funds can be maintained within the revolving loan as much as possible. Those are the only two revisions.
Thanks, Jeff. Any questions on the SSC, I want to say CBI, SSBCI revision?
Yes, another question that just, that just came, came to me was that means of paying it back? And that if they're only going to be using the per capita payment to pay it back, then I think that it should be limited to how much they can actually borrow. Is that permissible? Is that possible?
The loan limits and the capital limits approved for each program, they're set out in, it's not this document, but they're set out in like the main program guidelines. So if there were, I think the answer to your question, Shane, is yes. There would just need to be probably clarifications in those guidelines or at least discussion with Northspan, who's administering this, to make sure they understand if there's any limits that need to be applied based on, you know, access to per capitals or otherwise, then they follow those guidelines. So, you know, we can, we can have a follow-up discussion on it. And then if you wanted to make any additional revisions to those capital amounts, you could certainly do that.
Kim?
I was basically similar to what Jeff was going to say is, but one thing that's with this program is, is they have to pick a financial institution that they work with. But Northspan will help them do their business plan. And the business plan is the documents they take to the financial institution to get the loan. So to even get their, that's already inherently taken care of in the process because they have to show that their business is going, you know, is a possible successful and be able to make the payments. So they could, so then the financial institution would limit their, their amount of their loan to what the business would support.
Thank you.
I think, Kim, the clarification, I think, is, remember the old business loans that, that Boise Fort did?
Yeah.
Boise Fort was the one who, who tried to get the money back if, if anybody defaulted. So the band member would pay Boise Fort back. So now SSBCI is different in a way that the bank is the one that they're obligated to, right? Not, not paying us back directly.
Yep. So the old loan was a similar economic development grant package that came in, in the late 80s. And in that program, a applicant would apply with the tribal government. The tribal government would approve it and give the loan out. And then we would have to try to collect the payments. In this new program, what happens is, because we have Northspan in there, helps them actually develop an actual business plan, does education, like what, you know, making their payments or having to file taxes, stuff like, you know, a lot of stuff that a new entrepreneur might not know, you know? But they're there to help. Then they go to the bank. And so when they go to the bank, you know, we might have a participation loan or a capital loan. So we got the money from treasury and we'll put up a CD as collateral for that if the band member or, you know, the applicant defaults. The remedies for the bank is, so like, let's say they bought a piece of equipment for their business. They would have a secure, the first thing they would have is a secured interest in that equipment so they could repossess the equipment. And then the second thing for the bank is they could go at, after the CD because we put it up as collateral. So then at that point, I think this is where some of Shane's questions come back is because now the bank took Boise Fort's money that was for this program. That's when we would look at collecting from the band member to pay us back. But we're like, you know, there's others, you know, there's like two steps of head, you know, like the, well, like collecting the equipment or something. And so hopefully, we don't get to that point. But the remedies, I think Shane was asking about in the email chains was like, you know, we can do stuff in our application package is that they, they assign their per capita if they default and then we don't have, you know, stuff like that. And I think the other question we forgot in the thing was, is if they already have an outstanding business loan with us or another loan too. I think that's one of your questions. And so in the process, they go to Northspan, they get their package developed, they go to the bank, get all their application stuff together. Then it gets presented to the tribal council. And the tribal council at that point can approve or deny loan. We're the ultimate, you know, guarantee, you know, with the, the program money. So at that point, if they have something, you know, outstanding, we can say, you know, no, because this is outstanding or not. But, or we can have the per capita assignments. Is that the way you understand it, Jeff?
Yeah, the, the Northspan would present all that information. And I, I think that if the council wants to know a certain information upfront, that we could coordinate with Northspan about, you know, them disclosing if they've got debts to the band or things like that ahead of time. So council's got that information when you review an application.
Good. Any other questions or comments on the SSBCI revision or program? Seeing none? Thank you, Kim. Do we have a motion to approve the revision that was done to the SSBCI program?
I'll move.
Move by Tara? Is there a second?
All second.
Seconded by Perry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed, silent, motion carried. Okay, no other business, I see. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
At 11:30. Move by Shane. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, silent, motion carried. Chief McGwich, for everybody listening today and coming and asking questions and commenting, we appreciate that. We wish you a good, nice, warm, rain-free, rain-free now, I said, rain-free week or so, but thanks so much for being with us today. And Giga Waberman. Meeting adjourned.